Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to the order the committee of the whole board meeting on Tuesday, January fourteenth at six thirty-five P. M. and ask for real law.
Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Ms. Spidey?
Yeah.
Mr. Bearden?
Here.
Mr. Martini?
Here.
And Dr. Moore?
Here. And I will ask if there are any visitor comments.
Sure.
Any visitor comments?
I don't think so.
Yeah, okay. So who for approval of the minutes of December twelfth, twenty nineteen, ask for a second?
Go ahead.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
I agree.
Turn it over to Dr. Prudhomme.
Our first item under the finance section is the transportation services resumed services incorporated. Coming forward to make that presentation is Carolyn Gust, our Director of Purchasing and Transportation, and she will introduce the individual for recovery. And this item is being brought forth in an effort to transition our opponents to the back at our park and provide transportation to. This item is, at the conclusion of this presentation, we recommend that the contract resumed services be moved forward to the Board of Education on April twenty-third with the approximate savings to the District for the remainder of twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, school year seventy-three thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars. This item is an alignment with strategic plan priority goal four and board policy four, code sixty.
Good evening. Jack, I just pretty much told everything else.
I have.
Still my daughter. This here is Mark Rising. He's our accountant executive for Zoom Services. And this is Raul Joshi. He is the city launcher for the Chicagoland area. Zoom offers a different approach to student transportation, so I'm going to let these gentlemen take a little look down on their services and if they have any questions, they can come and ask.
Dr. Prudhomme, as board members, thanks for having us. I'll keep it brief because I think the full agenda.
Just bring your mic.
Yes.
As Russell recorded.
And as a fellow school board member, current school board member, I appreciate and thank you for the job. You guys seriously know what's going on in this job. So Zoom Services is currently a nationwide company. We're in seven states and continue to expand. We came to Illinois in November of last year, two thousand eighteen. And we currently are working with, I gave you a list, hopefully you saw the list that Carolyn provided and the school districts that we're working with. Actually, since you got that list, there's been another school district added to that. So we came to Illinois to help school districts provide alternative transportation. So we're not here to take away no bus business because that's the most cost-effective, safest way to transport your students in the district. What we're doing is trying to help districts with an alternative transportation. So whether that's your special ed students, as a parent of two students who had I Ps, I understand that, and for your district or health placement students, if there's a need for your transition students for maybe a job site or something like that, and also your independent students. The best thing about that is we personalize the service. It's a consistent driver. There's technology around it, so Carolyn has a dashboard where she can monitor the rides in real time. And the parents have an app so they can actually see where their student is in real time, just like you would with like say Uber or Lyft. They get the driver information on the app and they get notifications. So if they're picking up in the morning, the driver, you know, driver starts the ride before the driver even leaves their home or where they're coming from. And the parent will get a notification when the driver leaves, when the driver's fifteen minutes out, or when the driver's at the door. The driver doesn't have to touch the phone because I know there was a rule last July, don't touch your cell phone. So our drivers do not touch the cell phone. But it's a real nice personalized touch. We follow all the Illinois statutes as far as Secretary of State and Safe Ride Unit. All our drivers are school bus program certified. They've all taken the written and behind the wheel test. They've gone through the bus driver training. In addition to that, we go above and beyond even what school bus companies do. So we provide conflict de-escalation training. We provide how to work with and deal with special needs students and additional safety training that is not required by the state that we do for our drivers. So it's a real nice option, and the best part about it is you save money. So it's personalized service with technology and it's saving you money. And again, we're not trying to infringe on your current transportation provided contract. We're just offering that option for you as a district when you have those situations that you need for those type of students. And Raul is my day-to-day operations. He manages all our drivers. We've got a team of four people. There are operations team. We have offices in Park Ridge and Evanston. And currently we have close to a hundred and eighty drivers, I believe. And we'll continue to grow. And word mouth is a wonderful thing. How are your names?
If you know, what's your turnover for drivers? Like, can we expect our students to have the same driver for an entire year or is it generally more turnover?
Uh, sorry. Since we started, our first ride was in August, it was August fifteenth. Since then, we've had less than ten percent turnover. Even going through winter break, drivers are actually really excited to get back to driving. They ask a consistent drive, you know, form a bond with the child if you drive every day and during winter break, sure, they would like to get back to work. But, you know, if you see a kid every day, you will like to continue seeing a kid every day. So our turnover is very low and generally it is with drivers who maybe they find out that they got a much better full-time job. And we, you know, appreciate that and respect their decision to move on and get better.
And then do you combine students? Like, if you have two students going to the same location, will you have another one student in a vehicle?
We can. It depends on the students, particularly those I Ps, so we always ask the districts if that's okay and if it makes sense routing-wise, then we can. Some students in the past for transportation have been in route with another student that they're friends with, so we try to keep that. And if there are any special considerations that we need to make for the district, we do that as well.
And we don't charge extra for extra students in vehicles, so it's the same price.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You know, I have one. You said you try to have the same driver for a student. But what happens? Do you have backups or, I mean, like, it doesn't always work that way.
Great, great question. Yeah, that's a very great question. So we work with districts and we pick cases as far as out of Blue Island and as far north as Lake Villa. So we divided Illinois where that region into subregions where we staff back at drivers within fifteen or twenty minutes of every cluster of students we need to pick up. And so if something happens in the morning where the driver's flat tire or their car won't start in the morning because it's winter, we can always send backup for that suit.
And I actually failed to mention too on that note is that we are not a taxi company, so all we do is work with school districts. So all our drivers do is work with school districts in the state. We do not go and get somebody up from a hair or something like that, so they're not your typical taxi service, if you will. It's much more customized, personalized ride.
Very detailed presentation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a little notebook for you. It's, don't worry, it's only seventy-five dollars. I'll give you both a second. Thank you.
The next one is the resolution to transfer funds from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. At the conclusion of the presentation, it is our recommendation that the resolution to transfer four million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund be moved forward for approval at the January twenty-third Board of Education meeting. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and District Policy four, code sixty. Making the presentation is Ms. Cindy Sador, Chief Financial Officer, and Mr. Mike Carriello, Chief Operations Officer.
Good evening. So this will actually be the last time we come at this time. We actually were going to come twice here to do the transfers. It will be one cleaner. We would know what we were exactly transferring because if we come at this time, what we have is the amount that we've spent from July through December. And then in June, we'd like to come again for another transfer, and that would be the amount that we've spent from January through June. This one here, what we did is this is we know what the spend was from July through December. The other half is the part where we assume we will spend by June, so we continue to stay on our fiscal yield.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is the resolution giving notice of withdrawal from Collective Liability Insurance Cooperative, otherwise known as CLIC. At the conclusion of Ms. Sador's presentation, the recommendation is that the board approve the resolution to be moved forward to the January twenty-third, twenty twenty, meaning in the event that the decision is made to withdraw from the collective insurance liability cooperative. This is, I just want to say, in compliance with our mandate that contracts over certain amount, we review every five years. And so the business office has made a schedule of what those contracts are. We've been with CLIC for twenty-five years, and so it is time to review. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and District Policy four, code sixty.
Thank you. So this is just the resolution that part of our agreement had said in there that if we decide to move, we do have to have approval by the board and the resolution that we can actually withdraw if we decide at that time we will be going with a different book.
So can you just the timeline, because the resolution, can you just kind of go through the sequence?
So our instance is what we're doing is we're actually meeting with CLIC tomorrow to go over everything that we actually have because what we actually, the RFP out, what we're going to be looking is to make sure that we also have apples to apples. We don't want to have where we have less coverage, less money, but we want to make sure that what we have is the same coverage and where the dollar loans are falling. Hopefully that the dollar loans will be less, but that's what we'll be doing. So that will be, tomorrow we'll meet with them. Right after that, we will be signing out the packet for bid. We'll be posting, I believe we can post it by next Wednesday in the paper. And then after that, we should be coming, I believe, in March with what the, who will we actually be awarded to.
And just to kind of, so March, the notice, the resolution has to be filed by when?
By March second.
So I'm just, will we, will we have selected our, the, when will we choose who is awarded the RFP?
Yeah, that would be, well, we'll have the list ready. That should be by the end of, let's see, this is January. So we should be ready to actually, I'm sorry, it should be awarded in March. We should be ready to go with this probably in February. I have that wrong. That's okay. I thought today was Valentine's Day. My husband worked that. Sorry.
So we will have, by the end of February, we'll have.
You'll have, you'll have.
We'll have a recommendation that if needed, the resolution that would be issued.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I don't move, so from Hall Finance, I'm up there, sorry.
Thank you. The next one, and I had it open and then closed it. The next item is the Northern Illinois Independent Purchasing Co-operative rollovers. Ms. Sador is making this presentation in the absence of Ms. Profowski, who is the Director of Food Service, for our new board members. We are the oversight for the collective. So we normally bring this forward to the board. At the conclusion of the presentation, it is our recommendation that the company's list to be moved forward to the Board of Education for approval at this January twenty-third meeting.
So Mike is not allowed to go on another conference at this time again. She's going to present this. But this is, just like Dr. Prudhomme has already stated, this is basically, the very first one is just the rollovers. It's showing what we're rolling over. These weren't, some of them didn't have to go to the bid, so just letting everyone know this is what we have rolled forward. And again, she is with the co-op, you know, either you have that, so this is why she shows us.
And this is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and District Policy four, code sixty. Any questions?
Just for a follow-up, I would be interested, we talked in the past about how connecting our attempts to go green with our ordering, and I'm looking at, you know, we talked about with the water products and juice stuff and things like that. I'm just curious how that is, not for you, but how we're aligning that with our goals to reduce waste. And I have the same comment every year of the, I don't know, how the collective selects the items for purchase. It's always a bit stunning, the amount of processed foods we purchase.
Actually, a question, not your question, which is because in this role, this is purchasing for the, this is for the co-op, correct?
The co-op, yeah.
So I guess my question is from a policy standpoint, because this district might have a, you know, a policy that requires, you know, or encouraging green, but this, to the other members, do we set policy for the co-op, I guess is the question.
It's a question. I'll pass that on.
We would have to investigate.
Yeah.
The next one, still through the food chain, is the Northern Illinois Independent Purchasing Cooperative for further processed USDA commodity foods and for provision of commercial equivalents when USDA entitlement is exhausted.
That just sounds delicious. Sounds so good.
And at the conclusion of the presentation, the recommendation is that for the twenty-twenty-one school year, the awarded vendors Tyson for twenty-one thousand three hundred at a thirty-one percent savings and Asian Food Solutions for four hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and five dollars and forty-two cents and a four percent savings, be moved forward to the Board of Education for approval at the January twenty-third board meeting. This is in compliance with Priority Four and District Policy four, code sixty.
Questions on muffins?
It isn't yet. Let me just go to the office in the circle.
Any questions?
Okay, no questions on the muffins. Moving to the next one, which is still in the food chain. This one is the National Illinois Independent Purchasing Cooperative, RFP, for selected commercial foods. At the conclusion of this presentation, it is the recommendation that the twenty-twenty-one school year, the awarded vendors be J S B Muffin Town.
Muffin Town.
That one got a good laugh, wasn't it, crowd? That's next to Mucky Town.
Two hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars at a four percent savings and notables for one hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and ninety dollars, a three percent savings. Be moved forward to the board for approval at this January twenty-third, twenty-twenty Board of Education meeting. This is in compliance with Priority Four and District Policy four.
Okay.
The District Policy four, code sixty.
Are there any questions? I can't be there. I can't get my phone.
All right, thank you. I saw visions of muffins standing.
A lot of muffins. Seven million dollars worth of them.
I am composed now. The next item is the summer school budget. As a conclusion, this is an information item, and it's being presented where the budget will be, instead of presenting the budget individually as we have it at, the budget, I mean, the budget for summer school will be a part of the regular budget process and will be brought forward at the end of the spring semester. And this is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Two, for organic education and District Policy six, code forty. Let's move on to Ms. Sador.
So it will come forward because we do our budget in May. We do preliminary in May. And in the past, what used to happen, the reasoning came at this time is because we used to own that budget. And since we haven't been doing it the last couple of years, it makes more sense to actually come forward with it when it's actually budget season.
Any questions? I have a question. We just, with the waivers?
All right.
Just give some more detail on the actual, which was huge drop because of the chains that we made.
Exactly.
Like the proposed, how that, this is a little bit more, so it would be interesting to see how that came to be.
Yeah, so it's, and just for context, even for those who worked on the board a year ago, we had previously worked under a situation where our counselors had a certain number of waivers that were essentially at their disposal to grant to students to waive their summer school fees to ensure just more systemic equity across the board. Again, to really be in compliance with what the state board recommends. You know, we are, we decided going into last school year to waive all summer school fees for anybody who qualifies for free and reduced lunch. And as a result, that whole process we essentially eliminated. So this way, we knew that we were hitting all gets who hit that immediate threshold. We did still, however, last year, allow a small pool of those waivers to exist based off of specific need that counselors would just kind of give out, but had it filtered through Jason Lee's decision-making and mind if necessary. But actually, my judgment, why it comes last year, excuse me, but very few of those types of waivers were actually utilized. And so what you see, what you see here really is the amount for tuition and fee waivers for every single student who qualified for summer, who took summer school, who qualified for free and reduced lunch at the school year. So that's, that is, I don't know if that answers your question. As well, but I wanted to get that context.
Thanks.
Sure.
I'm going to just follow that question to one that they just said, then a different question.
Sure.
So there's limited number of waivers for students who are having financial difficulties but don't necessarily qualify for free and reduced, is that how it works?
Yeah.
And then I'm just wondering, are we doing any outreach to eighth grade families so that they know that they can avail themselves if they have students coming into that high school? You know, who might want to get some stuff either out of the way or get a little bit of a head start? Is that, I mean, have we done that? Would we consider doing that?
Yeah, we actually have open house coming up next Tuesday, the twenty-first, which we have advertised to those families specifically. Right, incoming ninth graders are encouraged, well, they will be attending. And we will have Mr. Lee and a variety of owners, I think he's in the audience somewhere. Yeah, there is. And we will have owners there representing kind of summer school for that exact purpose. So, yeah, we do want to make sure that our incoming ninth grade families are fully aware of the side of offerings that we offer in the summer school.
In terms of data sharing, are we able to get a list of like free and reduced lunch students who are currently in eighth grade so that we can target those families specifically so they know that there's the financial assistance?
Yeah, I'm not an expert on how that goes, so forgive me if I'm saying something out of line here. But I'm pretty confident, well, I do know that the first one, the answer is no, right? We cannot get free and reduced lunch information from another school district. That is something that once students come here, they have to fill out the application process and qualify for it anew with us. And so actually, we get in this situation where students aren't able to qualify right until they complete their regular registration process in the fall. So I can't, actually, Jason Lee, I don't know if he wants to explain how we address that. I might be putting you on the spot in unfair ways, so just ignore me if you like. And I can work on more completely considering that question if you'd like to.
Yeah, I know.
For future.
Say something you'd like to respond to.
I think you hit the nail on the head there. So you're absolutely correct. I'm sorry, except we can't get that information. But we are communicating with the feeder schools and allowing them, we are communicating with the feeder schools and allowing them the information through the digital back end through their communications that we are offering free summer school for those that do qualify.
And so we would be able to use their free and reduced lunch list, though, even though technically the students haven't reached for two hundred?
We can't.
Or any chance that we would access it, but like they could go to those students who are, and we would honor that.
Yes, yes, you are correct.
Hey, for asking that, that's important, right? Otherwise, you're going to service someone or others, and that's unfair, so thank you.
I kind of had a, I kind of had a follow-up to that, just to make sure I'm clear. So the students that are currently in eighth grade, if they're currently getting free and reduced lunch, you're sharing the information. Somehow the information is being shared with families that they have the potential to take summer school in that summer between eighth and ninth grade, right?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then if they're not submitting their paperwork for registration for the fall, as far as like verifying for free and reduced lunch here, you're still honoring them being able to take the summer school classes based on their free and reduced lunch status from last year.
Yeah, they would have to come in and let us know that. We couldn't get that directly from ninety-seven or ninety, but they are able to start that process in the summer to qualify for this reduced summer.
Thank you.
Our delivery.
Isn't, don't students register in the spring for school?
They, they do register for the classes in the spring, but actually becoming kind of a registered student that doesn't really begin until you hit that fall semester, which is at August eight.
So there's no way to have, to do that earlier?
Yeah, that's kind of, I don't want to overspeak in this specifics on that, but we looked into this process last year to figure out how we could do that. And we can't officially start that, that whole process until we are right upon the school year. I can flesh that out a little more.
I know that. I just was curious in terms of, because it is, you know, I think of our, the fact that we're separate districts and if a student were in a K twelve district.
Exactly.
The fact of having to re-fill out all these forms. I have one other, it kind of dovetails with the data we had on attendance of the summer school and how certain students are using it differently. And I don't know, this number reflects the free and reduced lunch. Is there, would we be able to have, I know we could, the, is there any one that's looking at if summer school usage has changed, like if we're getting more eighth graders and ninth graders, African-American and other students of color that are coming in that needed, you know, those credits as opposed to those, how they, how a lot of those students are using summer school to, you know, get credit for graduation but not necessarily the experience of getting used to the school, which is what a lot of us do.
Right. I'm sorry, so the question is like, how often is used?
Yeah, well, we know now that more students are being served potentially that wouldn't have been, I would think, a leap year with our increase in numbers, but do we know where they're, where they're going?
I see. You know, actually, when we took a look at our program evaluation last October, we did see a huge swing, actually, in how summer school is being used from how it had been in the previous year. What we actually do see is extending the benefit, or at least actually going to benefit, we aren't charging, all right, to a population that in many ways was paying for summer school in the previous years. So I, we could talk a little bit about how we could figure out whether those students who got this way for this past year are, would have, like, took some, what they took summer school, you know, that summer, but wouldn't have otherwise. I don't know if we even answered that, so we have to sort of explore. I mean, we could build that into our program eval for next summer and see.
Because I think that that is critical.
Because I think that that is critical in understanding
Yeah.
the equitable aspects of this. If, if we're reaching folks that here for, did not consider this an option.
Yeah.
If we've increased that number. And then back to Sarah's question, you know, question about incoming for the open house next week. Continuing to reiterate the importance of summer school beyond, you know, getting credits for a class that you failed or that you need for graduation, but as the way to learn about school and to, you know, school climate activation. I don't know if that is a part of the field, but it would, I mean, I think it all ties together with our goals of increasing those stronger, you know, younger students using summer school.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, advertising summer school as part of the, the regular orientation process, we'll have all these things that are going on at the school that are more, that is, it's focused not just on our curricular experiences, but on our kind of enrichment experiences is part of the thinking behind that, right? So we want to sell this as a way to experience the full breadth of what high school has to offer and not just as a way to kind of muscle through credits or make up something you might have missed by one way or the other. So I, I absolutely agree with that. There's, there's a, as we talked about last October, we still haven't been able to really crack the nuts, I speak, of, of trying to shift enrollment patterns and use patterns of how summer school functions here in Oakdale. And it's something that is still our, our number one goal with, with the summer school. So we're going to still keep playing with that. While we saw, like I said, you know, slight shifts in that last year with all the things we did differently, with the waivers in place, with the shifts, the caps on classes, with the courses that we offer. We did see a big old shift, and so we're going to have to continue to play with that. Yeah.
And just on those lines, I think they need to rebrand it. Like, why don't we call it summer semester instead of summer school, for example? It's just something to help parents to reframe conceptually, like this is not catch-up, it's get ahead or enrich. Something like that, right?
Yeah.
Summer school has this like nineteen-sixties feel to it.
It does, isn't it?
Yeah, to some, but the fact that there is a certain part of our, you know, demographic, our, a lot of our white students and our, you know, high achieving students of color use summer school in the way that we're talking as an experience. So it is, you know, not everyone got the memo that it's a experience that is beneficial beyond credits.
I have a follow-up. I know we can share data, right, between the districts. I know that that's a piece that's, you know, ongoing conversation, but I'm curious what kind of communication is happening between the districts. Like, is there someone who's in your building who connects with someone in the feeder districts that actually would be talking about this, raising awareness to that person so they're raising awareness inside the buildings?
Are you referring to just kind of, you started talking about data sharing, but it sounds like you're, is it just general communication about our programming? Yeah, so, yeah, I have good, good links into both districts, both their PR departments, but also their, their curriculum folks in both districts. And so they are the main points of contact. And I don't think there's any hiccup, or at least I've never heard from parents or anybody else. I, actually, I can even, I never heard that from myself as a parent, when I was getting information from ninety-seven about the summer programming that we offer our kids here. So I don't know the communication out of families, through whatever channels they've established in the districts is, is the challenge. I, I think we're probably more getting bang for our buck by focusing on this idea of kind of rebranding, repackaging what summer school really is all about. That's probably a better avenue for us. But I do believe we're just getting out, especially when you consider that we're sending summer school information out through this orientation, and all of our families are coming in that, we're getting a huge, huge percentage of it coming back to us here on the twenty-first and with, you know, receiving it, so.
I'm just thinking of like specific demographic groups in our buildings, being in one of the buildings right now?
Yeah.
That feeds into this building, right?
Yeah, right.
I'm just thinking, whatever the communication is that's happening, is there a way for it to not, I'm so clear, I'm not saying share data, so let me just be clear, I'm not saying share data, but to be more targeted, that's all.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just curious what, of those avenues, because there, I, I would imagine there's a population of students in our building, in the building that I work in in the day gig, and in this building that are coming here that are not getting that information or it's not being stressed to them enough. So I'm wondering, how do we, you know, build that a little tighter?
He's working so hard, thank you.
And the, the data, this, the, the financials? I know the, the eight to nine connection stipends was something that jumped pretty significantly last year. It looks like it's continued. What, what's that?
What, why did it jump or what is eight to nine connections? Yes?
Yes.
All right. Eight to nine connections is the summer transition program that helps students make connections between eighth grade and ninth grade and specifically targeted for students who, through collaboration, communication with folks in ninety-seven and ninety, are kind of recommended for it because we have signs they might start with that transition, okay? It had been run for a long time by Chris Johnson, Katie O'Keefe for one year. Last year, it was, it was managed and kind of overseen by Kristen Keaton. And so last year, what we did was we, we expanded, essentially last year, and that's why you see that, but a large portion of the funding for it is in, or at least a portion of it comes from, from title hours as well, so it's a little bit of cash. And so we're talking about reading support specifically, we're talking about a variety of enrichment activities. And the idea is not just to get kids kind of shoring up deficit skill with kind of a deficit mindset, how, of course, students are before they come to the building, but I, but the idea is give them exciting a lot, the type of academic work, yes, they're going to be doing when they're in, in, in high school, but also give them this, a peer group where they are experiencing positive things here in the school. We had a game draw, and then actually, Dr. Proudder Adams and I went outside and we competed against each other in a bean toss with the kids, or a bean bean toss, which was hilarious. Who won?
I did. No, that's.
Dr. Proudder Adams won, that's exactly. Yeah. But, so anyway, the idea is to provide, the idea is to provide a really positive experience for kids that is also academically minded and hoping that this will add transition. And I don't know, it's, it's been successful for us. So anyway, the department expanded a little bit last year, and as much as you see there with, and actually bodies coming in to help with reading support and also with our enrichment activities.
Any other questions?
Thank you.